Let me start by just acknowledging that we have seen in the last several weeks, last few months, the kinds of epic changes and events in our country that are as profound as anything that I've seen in my lifetime. And I'm now a lot older than plan. I'm going to be 59 some. And let me begin by acknowledging that although all of us have been feeling pain, uncertainty, disruption, some folks have been feeling it more than others. Most of all, the pain that's been experienced by the families Brianna and Ahmad and Tony and Sean and too many others. Those that we thought about during that moment of silence. And to those families who've been directly affected by tragedy, please know that Michelle and I and the nation read with you, hold you in our prayers, we're committed to the fight of creating a more just nation in memory of your sons and daughters. And we can't forget that even as we're confronting the particular acts of violence that led to those losses, our nation in the world is still in the midst of a global pandemic that's exposed the vulnerabilities of our healthcare system, but also the disparate treatment and as a consequence, the disparate impact that exists in our healthcare system, unequal investment, biases that have led to a disproportionate number of infections and loss of life in communities of color. So in a lot of ways, what has happened over the last several weeks is challenges, structural problems here in the United States have been thrown into high relief. They're the outcomes, not just of the immediate moments in time, but they're the result of a long history of slavery and Jim Crow and redlining and institutionalized racism that too often have been the plague, the original sin of our society. And in some ways, as tragic as these past few weeks have been, as difficult and scary and uncertain as they've been, they've also been an incredible opportunity for people to be awakened to some of these underlying trends. And they offer an opportunity for us to all work together to tackle them, to take them off, to change America and make it live up to its highest ideals. And part of what's made me so hopeful is the fact that so many young people have been galvanized and activated and motivated and mobilized. Because historically, so much of the progress that we've made in our society has been because of young people. Dr. King was a young man when he got involved. Cesar Chavez was a young man. Malcolm X was a young man. The leaders of the feminist movement were young people. Leaders of union movements were young people. The leaders of the environmental movement in this country and the movement to make sure that the LGBT community finally had a voice and was representative were young people. And so when I want, when, when sometimes I feel despair, I just see what's happening with young people all across the country and the talent and the voice and sophistication that they're displaying. And it makes me feel optimistic. It makes me feel as if, you know, this country's going to get better. Now, I want to speak directly to the young men and women of color in this country, who as Plan just so eloquently described, have witnessed too much violence and too much death. And too often, some of that violence has come from folks who were supposed to be serving and protecting, you. I want you to know that you matter. I want you to know that your lives matter, that your dreams matter. And when I go home and I look at the faces of my daughters Sasha and Malia, and I look at my nephews and nieces, I see limitless potential that deserves to flourish and thrive. And you should be able to learn and make mistakes and live a life of joy without having to worry about what's going to happen when you walk to the store or go for a jog or are driving down the street or looking at some birds in a park. And, and, and so I hope that you also feel hopeful, even as you may feel angry, because you have the power to make things better and you have helped to make the entire country feel as if this is something that's got to change. You've communicated a sense of urgency that is as powerful and as transformative as anything that I've seen in recent years. I want to acknowledge the folks in law enforcement that share the goals of reimagining policing. Because there are folks out there who took the oath to serve your communities and your countries, have a tough job. And I know you're just as outraged about tragedies in recent weeks as are many of the protesters. And so we're grateful for the vast majority of you who protect and serve. I've been heartened to see those in law enforcement who've recognized, let me march along with these protesters. Let, let, let me stand side by side and recognize that I want to be part of the solution. And you've shown restraint and volunteered and engaged and listened because you're a vital part of the conversation. And, and change is going to require everybody's participation. Now, when I was in office, this was mentioned, I created a task force on 21st century policing in the wake of the tragic killing of Michael Brown. That task force, which included law enforcement and community leaders and activists, was charged to develop a very specific set of recommendations to strengthen public trust and foster better work and relationships between law enforcement and communities that they're supposed to protect, even as they're continuing to promote effective crime reduction. And, and that report showcased a range of solutions and, and strategies that were proven and that were based on data and research to improve community policing and collect better data and reporting and identify and do something about implicit bias and how police were trained and reforms to use the force the police deploy in ways that increase safety rather than precipitate tragedy. And that report demonstrated something that's critical for us today. Most of the reforms that are needed to prevent the type of violence and injustices that we've seen take place at the local level. A reform has to take place in more than 19,000 American feminist families, more than 18,000 local enforcement jurisdictions. And so as activists and everyday citizens raise their voices, we need to be clear about where change is going to happen and how we can bring about that change. It is mayors and county executives that appoint most police chiefs and negotiate collective bargaining agreements with police units. And that determines police practices in local communities. It's district attorneys and state's attorneys that decide typically whether or not to investigate and ultimately charge those involved in police misconduct. And those are all elected positions. And in some places, there are police community review boards with the power to monitor police conduct. Those oftentimes may be elected as well. The bottom line is, I've been hearing a little bit of chatter in the internet about voting versus protest, politics and participation versus civil disobedience and direct action. This is not a either/or. This is a both and. To bring about real change, we both have to highlight a problem and make people in power uncomfortable. But we also have to translate that into practical solutions and laws that can be implemented and we can monitor and make sure we're following up on. So, very quick, let me just close with a couple of specific things. What can we do? Number one, we know there are specific evidence-based reforms that if we put in place today, would build trust, save lives, would not show an increase in crime. Those are included in the 21st century policing task force report. You can find it on obama.org. Number two, a lot of mayors and local elected officials read and supported the task force report, but then there wasn't enough follow-up. So today, I am urging every mayor in this country to review your use of force policies with members of your community and commit to report on planned reforms. What are the specific steps you can take? And I should add, by the way, that the original task force report was done several years ago. Since that time, we've actually collected data in part because we implemented some of these reform ideas. So we now have more information and more data as to what works. And there are organizations like Campaign Zero and Color of Change and others that are out there highlighting what the data shows, what works, what doesn't in terms of reducing incidents of police misconduct and violence. Let's go ahead and start implementing those. So we need mayors, county executives, others who are in positions of power to say, this is a priority. This is a specific response. Number three, every city in this country should be a My Brothers Keeper community. Because we have 250 cities, counties, tribal nations who are working to reduce the barriers and expand opportunity for boys and young men of color, the programs and policy reforms, public-private partnerships. So go to our website, get working with that because it can make a difference. And, and let me just close by saying this. I've heard some people say that you have a pandemic, then you have these protests. This reminds people of the 60s and the chaos and the discord and distrust throughout the country. I have to tell you, although I was very young when you had riots and protests and assassinations and discord back in the 60s, I know enough about that history to say there is something different here. You look at those protests and that was a far more representative cross-section of America out on the streets peacefully protesting and who felt moved to do something because of the injustices that they had seen. That didn't exist back in the 1960s, that kind of broad coalition. The fact that recent surveys have showed that despite some protests having then been marred by the actions of some, a tiny minority that engaged in violence, that despite, you know, as usual, that got a lot of attention, a lot of focus, despite all that, a majority of Americans still think those protests were justified. That wouldn't have existed 30, 40, 50 years ago. There is a change in mindset that's taking place, a greater recognition that we can do better. And that is not as a consequence of speeches by politicians. That's not the result of, you know, spotlights in news articles. That's a direct result of the activities and organizing and mobilization and engagement of so many young people across the country who put themselves out on the line to make a difference. And, and so I just had to say thank you to them for helping to bring about this moment and just make sure that we now follow through. Because at some point, you know, attention moves away. At some point, protests start to dwindle in size. And it's very important for us to take the momentum that has been created as a society, as a country, and say, let's use this to finally have an impact. All right? Thank you, everybody. Proud of you guys. And I know that we're going to be hearing from a bunch of people who have been on the front lines on this and know a lot more than I do about it. Proud of it.
Thank you, Mr. President. For everyone that's watching, the president decided he wanted to stay and be a part of the conversation that's going to be led by Brittany Packnett Cunningham with the attorney general and other leaders. Before we go into that section, I want to reiterate the pledge that the president mentioned for mayors. So if you are a mayor, you can go to obama.org and you can take this pledge. And I also want to announce that several mayors have said, sign me up first, and they have already taken the pledge. Mayor de Blasio of New York, Mayor Lightfoot of Chicago, Mayor Frey of Minneapolis, Mayor Bowser of DC, Mayor Breed of San Francisco, and Mayor Keisha Lance Bottoms of Atlanta, all My Brothers Keeper communities as well. So if you go to that page, you can take the pledge and we will be posting all the cities and all the mayors that take the pledge. And then in 90 days, we are going to publicly report out who has taken the pledge and the work that's happening to create real lasting change in communities. So it is now my pleasure to introduce a friend, an activist, an educator, a writer, an NBC, an MSNBC news contributor, a lifelong activist and member of the Ferguson uprising, a co-founder of Campaign Zero, a policy platform to end police violence and co-host of Pod Save the People. Previously, she was an appointed member of the Ferguson Commission and President Obama's task force on 21st century policing. Today, Campaign Zero, of which Brittany is a co-founder, launched the campaign hashtag eight can't wait, an advocacy campaign to push mayors across America to adopt eight use-of-force policies that together can reduce police violence by upwards of 70%. Just to moderate this conversation with President Obama and our other incredible leaders, please welcome Brittany Packnett Cunningham.
Thank you so much, Michael. And thank you, President Obama, for gathering this conversation in this moment of intense grief, but hopefully intense purpose. We are here together to talk, to have a family conversation. You may be watching this and have come here because you are experiencing that grief and you need some community in which to do that. And you're hoping that we can hold you up to the light. You may be here because like me, you are girded in the strength of your ancestry and you know you come from people just like I do, who did far more with far less and are sure that we can win in this moment and everyone after it. However, you have come here, why you have come here, we're glad that you're here because we're here to get honest, to get clear, most importantly, to get to work. So that even the heartening moments of seeing people raise their voices or even in the moments where a police officer might take a knee, that that momentary action might turn into true systemic and lasting change. There's so many brilliant voices that have been gathered. And as we listen to these guests, we'll all be able to better understand how we got to this moment and how we seized our own power to get through it. Before we get started, like Michael, I want to make sure to lift up the names of the people who brought us here. Because it wasn't just the former president, though we're deeply grateful. It was George Floyd, a father in Minneapolis. It was Breonna Taylor, a life-saving EMT on the front lines in Louisville. It was Sean Reed, a friend and a brother in Indianapolis. It was Tony McDavid, a black trans man who loved life in Tallahassee, Florida. And though it wasn't from an officer's bullet, we are having this conversation, of course, in the shadow of Ahmaud Arbery, a son from Georgia, and Nina Pop and Ayanna Dior, two black trans women who were killed as a hatred that comes against intersectionally marginalized people in this country every single day. Frankly, there are too many names to list because as the president has already said, we have been at this unfortunately for a long time. So that means that there is indeed work to do and now we're going to get to do it. So Attorney General Holder, I actually want to start with you. I was raised always to be an activist. So frankly, if you ask my mom, this is the only life I've ever known. But I came into the work specifically of fighting against the surge of police violence as it relates especially to systemic racism in 2014, when Mike Brown was killed in Ferguson, Missouri, just a few minutes from my own home. And you came to Ferguson. And as you know, there were thousands, literally thousands, of brave and mighty protesters, just like the ones we're seeing out right now. Those protest organizers were on the ground, leaf her chain, and making the entire world pay attention. I want to know what you learned from those grassroots activists? What have you carried from those conversations in Ferguson?
We'll get going in two minutes. Thank you so much for joining. Thank you so much.
With you through to the work that you then and that you're doing now.
Yeah, well, it's good to see you again. And thank you, President Obama, for convening us here today. You know, I remember back in, in, in 2014, I remember meeting with the president. We were on vacation and talking about whether or not I should go to Ferguson. It was a risky thing. Didn't know exactly how people would react to my presence, but we made the determination that I would go. And I think the thing that struck me the most was there were a few things that really got me. I mean, there were young people who were there and who were unbelievably impressive, who were in a lot of ways directing the actions that you saw on the streets. You saw a community that was in anguish and there was a commonality with regard to the things that they were concerned about. I was really struck by the fact that people consistently talked about the way in which people of color were unfairly treated by the criminal justice system. And there was a genuine desire by people to make things better. It wasn't all about just complaining. There was a genuine desire to work, to make things better. And I left there actually heartened by what I saw, both in terms of the reaction that I got. People were extremely respectful. And I know we had good dialogues while I was there. But also left with the notion that if we invested some time, if we invested some federal resources, that we would be in a position using those great leaders that we met, those young people who we met there to make life in Ferguson better and then use that as an example of what was possible in the, in the rest of the country.
Let's get this going. I really appreciate all of you joining in. And this is 10 AM on Saturday. And we have been having multiple conversations on this topic. And I'm here to listen, to gather perspectives from all of you. And so let's have a very interactive conversation. But if you look at what is going on today, you know, this is the time of, I would call it fierce introspection. Because the world has been gathered, has been held by the scruff of the collar and we have been yanked around. And, you know, the minds are going through turmoil. You know, it was initially with coronavirus. And now with all this that happened with George Floyd. And you wonder, you wonder if, why this is happening? And, you know, why do we have to deal with it today? But we always talk about 2020, vision 2020. And this is the time we are supposed to get a new perspective, a new perspective and develop a new vision for the world. And it's not happening for, it's, it's not a random happening, is what I would say. You know, it's happening because we are being asked to draw attention inwards within us and come to some key realizations. And we are, we are being asked to make choices and decisions for us to make this world a better place. And we always talk about make, let's make this world a better place. But nothing like the events, like what is happening today, like what has happened in the past few weeks, for us to really realize that. And, you know, the kind of fears that I hear people talking is you would never, ever hear about it. To some extent, as we shelter in place and, you know, we are cut away from the noise of the external world, you know, it makes us think, I believe, you know, you can be trapped in a lot of activity, you know, when the world is open as it used to be. You know, we can keep ourselves very, very busy. And with that busyness, you know, we don't take pause. We don't, we don't listen to what is really going on in the minds and our heart. And all this that is happening today, with the issues of racism and prejudice, you know, it has existed for many, many years. So I was talking to a friend of mine. And he's, he's a retired person who lives in Campbell, a black person, a good friend of mine. And I was chatting with him and I said something. I don't know what it was, but I remember what he said. Rishi, what are you talking about? This has existed forever. What we are seeing today has existed forever. And of course, I couldn't but agree with him, you know, and I don't recall what I'd said. But this is the time, you know, I think the world has been purged. We are being purged of a lot of negative stuff that is going on. And we have been asked to make those choices now. Because if not, then we'll be in this vicious cycle where we'll once again be grabbed by the scruff of the collar and we'll be yanked around. So this is the time we need to make some great choices and truly make this world a better place. Because we have to build a better tomorrow. And nothing like all of you, the youth of our community, the youth of our community. And, you know, when you look at how the current group of, let's call it, you know, a group of elected leaders, political leaders, do they have the wherewithal to make those, make those incredible changes? You know, how can you make change happen? Which really addresses the challenges of the world. And to some extent, you know, I believe that we are in a situation where people are realizing that choices we make in terms of people we elect completely reflects upon the world we are going to create. And that is a fact, that is a fact. But this is truly come to fore. And I would like to quote somebody yesterday in terms of what they posted on Twitter. And, you know, this is something that we are all, we all have been thinking about in terms of why aren't, why aren't elected leaders, why don't they make these types of changes? You know, how can we hold the system, the system to, to, to bear with respect to what needs to be done? And it comes from an appetite. It comes from, from having that willpower. It comes from standing up to special interest groups. It stands, it comes from political courage, political courage that we need to have. So how many elected leaders, you know, have the political courage to question the system and, and make those bold statements? You know, I think that President Obama, you know, as our first black president, we should have seen some positive happening in this direction. And I believe it did, but not enough. Now, I believe we could have done a lot more. And, you know, as every leader, you know, they get pulled into many, many different directions and you have to focus on the top two or three challenges that we have on hand. And it could, any leader, you know, when you look at your, your parents who work as, as an executive, perhaps, the world of tech, you know, they have to make those choices too. And there are, there are 20 problems you could solve in their role, in their capacity, but they have to focus on one or two or perhaps three. So that's how you have to do things. And at this point, you know, we are clearly, you know, our, our challenges with respect to the coronavirus, with respect to the economy, with respect to our supply chain, with respect to creating a self-aligned economy in terms of creating, you know, safe drugs for our community, cheaper drugs for our community, you know, where we are able to create a social net. So that's the, that's the call to action from coronavirus. You know, it's, it's popping out loud and clear from so many different directions where people are drawing attention and telling me that, okay, Rishi, I understand what you are saying with respect to healthcare. You know, we need to, we need to create a healthcare offering for a lot of different people. And then we talk, look at society in terms of, you know, is there really racism or not? And there were very subtle shades of racism that we perhaps ignored, that perhaps I, I had to deal with. So here is what happened. So, you know, we, we used to live in Michigan. And, and, you know, we, that was the very first house we bought. And so as we moved in, this was probably like the first week. And, you know, Seema and I would go for walks because it was a nice neighborhood. And we say, okay, let's go for walks. And we would get out and walk. And, and there was, my, our next door neighbor had a, had a dog who was, who was a little hyper energy, you know, very hyper energy. And he would be out there, you know, without a leash. And in Michigan, you know, over here we have fences. But over there, there are no fences between homes. So, so, you know, if you, if you have a dog who's out there in your yard, it's really not your yard, you know? So anyway, I mean, we were actually walking on the street. And we had heard of lots of neighbors talk about this dog, that watch out for this dog. And so as we were walking and suddenly we see this dog running up to us, it was probably like 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM. It was getting a little dark. And the dog approached us. And so literally I had to stand in front and we had to sort of, like, be a little fierce in terms of pushing the dog away with just my, my fierce action. You know, I obviously didn't do anything. But I just stood in front of Seema to make sure that this dog would not attack us. And the dog eventually ran off, basically. So, so this is what happened. And so I called the next door neighbor. And I basically said, you know, this is what happened. So, you know, I would like to request you to please put, you know, keep, keep a leash on the dog. That would be very, very helpful. And in fact, I've heard this from other neighbors as well. So, so could you please do that? And what I was told then, I mean, I would never ever, never ever forget. And what I was told was, you know, we don't want people like you in our neighborhood. I don't know why you are here. And it was like, wow, really? And, you know, till then, I hadn't expected too much of racism and, or racism. Was it really racism? I think it was in some degree. And I was taken aback, I was taken aback. And it sort of drew attention upon me that perhaps there are people who treat me differently. You know, I look different, I talk different, and perhaps people look at me differently. And then I'll go back to the time when I came to graduate school in this country. So I was in a east, east coast university. And so I was, I'd gotten some level of funding. But as, excuse me, as an international student, you're looking for different approaches to, 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 to ensuring that, that, that you can survive and thrive in this country. So there was a, you know, how you have like graduate admissions committee? There's a professor who I'd been communicating. So I reached out to professor to have a meeting. And, and he was, he was a little unhappy with me because I was a little persistent. And what he said was, you know, what do you guys expect? You know, this country is not made of gold, is not paved with gold. This country is not paved with gold that you can come up and you can get anything you want. And that was, you know, as a, as a graduate student with not much maturity in the world, I was also taken aback with that. And so these are things that we are all probably experienced to some extent. You know, we have all sort of been through it. And it could be something, something dramatic. Or it could be something very, very subtle, you know? And, and this is the changes that we need to make. Because I think we are all together as one. And we have to define a better world. And nothing like demonstrating love for each other. You know, and like, like we had Nelson, Nelson Mandela. You know, one of his quotes was, we don't come into this world with hatred. You know, we are taught to hate by circumstances or by people or by surroundings or, or perhaps by teachers, right? There are people, when we come in into this world, we are a clean slate. We don't have any preconceived notions. It's what the world teaches us. And so what Nelson Mandela says is that, you know, we should teach love. Because this is what we should all do to purge the hatred. And, and this is what needs to happen, you know, from, to purge this racism from every strata of society. So I'll give you an example of Israel. You know, you talk about the water challenge we have. California has a huge water challenge. In fact, we had a conversation with Dr. Nozha Azami from Stanford University. Just, I think it was last weekend, you know, we had a very good conversation on water, which is posted at rishikumar.com/realitycheck. So if you, if you go there, at the very bottom, you will find the archives. And there are lots of videos in there. You can watch, because this reality check for Rishi series, we have been conducting for many, many months now. And you can find lots of archives of videos. It was a very good conversation. But the reason I state that was, you know, with respect to water, it's, it's, it's a huge challenge that we have and we have to do something about it. You know, it's, 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 it's been a burning problem for many years. And we have largely ignored it. For example, with the Anderson reservoir that needs to be retrofitted. And now the FEMA says that you have to empty the water. It's a, the Anderson reservoir, many of us get water from that particular reservoir. It's to the south of us. And in fact, I've visited that because I'm part of the Santa Clara Valley Water Commission. And they had taken us on a tour to visit a few different water sites, a day long tour. So I, I, I benefited from that tour to actually see, you know, intimately from close range, you know, all the different offerings with respect to how we get clean water. And I realized that this has been a burning problem. We haven't done much about it. And similarly, when you look at the issues on hand we have today, you know, we haven't quite addressed that as well. But going back to Israel with the water challenge, you know what they did? They actually, in the middle of a desert, they are in the middle of a desert. And they actually created some great best practices. And I won't get into all of them. But I'll talk about one thing, just one thing. And you know what they did for kindergarten students when they come in or perhaps even preschool? They are taught how to conserve water. They are taught how to conserve water. And they completely changed the outlook of these students, of these kids as they grow up with water, how precious it is. Because, you know, minds are, young minds are very, excuse me, are very clean, very clean. And you can put the right types of ideas into them. And so what they did was, they trained these kids to understand how precious water is and how they could conserve water. So now Israel is completely self-dependent with water. So similarly, in our country, if we start these very basic elements of love and brotherhood and being kind as a fundamental component of what we do in kindergarten, you know, I think that would have a lot of value. You know, we, we focus so much upon, upon math and English and all these types of things to, to provide us a space in the economy, which is important. But at the same time, you know, I don't think so we teach, teach our kids enough to how to be a better member of society. You know, how to, how to be part of a society that we can, that we can love each other and be there for each other and, and stand tall for each other. So there are a couple of quotes I would like to read. So this is from, this is from somebody who lives in our community. He's John Sakoda from Decibel Ventures. And he posted this on Twitter. And it brought to, for everything that I'd been thinking of. And so let me read this. What John says is, it took a pandemic and social unrest to get everyone to understand how important it is to have great elected. How important it is to have great elected officials at every level of government. Next time you're asked to vote, take it seriously. These roles are not just about politics. They can be a matter of life and death. They can be a matter of life and death. You know, a lot of people come to me and tell me, Rishi, I know what you're doing, but I'm very apolitical. And I'm not going to engage in anything, any of these things that you do. And I just smile at them. Because, you know, now they have increases chances of something happening. And I guarantee you, the moment they have said that, it's within a month or two or perhaps a few months, they reach out to me and say, Rishi, I need your help with this. And you know what I tell them? Yes, let me see who my political connections are. Because I remember that very clearly what they said, that I'm apolitical. You know, if we, if we don't, if we don't understand the value of elected leadership, it will be drawn attention to it. And which is what is happening today with coronavirus and with respect to the upheaval that we are all seeing. So, so that is what I wanted to say. And let's, let's make this a fairly interactive discussion and see what questions you have, what ideas you have. And I just want to have a good conversation. And I'll be making a lot of notes. As you come, come forth with your ideas, with your vision for America, you know, what would you like to suggest? And I'm here to listen and take notes and see how we can build out a great policy for the future of a better America. So how we'll do this is, you can put your questions in the comment window. You can send it to me one on one. Or you can send it to everybody. And we'll go through by picking your questions in order as they appear. So let's, let's begin that. So think about your questions or even if you want to just chime in, you can just say, I want to chime in and we'll allow you to speak. So, so let's, let's get this started. Who wants to go first? I think everybody's still sort of waking up, looks like, a shy group we have here. Okay, I'm waiting for the first question. And here we go. Tim Meneses, let's go to Tim.
Hey there, Rishi. I've just been thinking a lot recently about this whole movement. And like, even before like George Floyd, this is just a comment. I guess I'm just kind of like, getting on my thoughts. But like, like what you said in one of your emails, it was like, you know, I can't jog, I can't run because of my skin color. And as a person of skin color, like, I, I experience kind of that, those stereotypes that come with my race. But I had to do some more research to understand, like, black people, in my opinion. And I think we're starting to see that it's just so much worse. Like, I don't get stopped when I'm driving at a traffic stop because of like the color of my skin. I don't like, like, I can go run my neighborhood and have just a friendly walk or run and like say hi to a neighbor without getting like sneers at, which I take, like, I haven't seen as a privilege, I guess. And I know, I just, my thoughts.
Take your time. We are, we are here for you. So take your time, collect your thoughts.
Um, I'd like to chime in as well.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so personally, I feel like that as-
Harshini, would you mind waiting? Let's go to, let's go to the order. And we'll go after, we'll have you after Ronit. Let's go to Ambika. So please, just put in a comment on the chat window and we'll follow that hierarchy of the conversation. Okay, let's go to Ambika.
Hello, Representative Moore.
Ambika, we can barely hear you, so.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, it's slightly better, yes. If you don't mind speaking a little louder, that would be awesome.
Yeah, sure. So an idea I had was, I think it'd be really important if we were able to hear the stories of people in the black community. So if we could have maybe a webinar or another Zoom call, like the one that I think happened on Thursday, where we just listened to their stories and anyone from that community who's willing to contribute and like share their experience with racism. I think that'd be really nice since everyone is more aware of how it's actually affecting that community.
That's a great thought. Thank you for sharing that. We'll definitely take you up on that. Ambika, thank you so much for bringing that idea. And I would, if you don't mind, Ambika, if you can send me an email at campaign@rishie2020.com. If you, if you, in fact, with all the ideas that you express, I'm sending the email at the chat window. And the, the reason why you can email us is because we are actually writing a policy paper on how do we combat racism in America? And how to prevent George Floyd's, a new George Floyd happening? So, so that's the purpose of this paper. So if you are able to share your ideas. Let's go back to Timothy. Timothy, you want to continue talking to us?
Well, I just really like that idea from Ambika. Going off a point you just said, Rishi, like, we don't want another George Floyd incident to ever happen again. And I think this is like a point to make that's really important for everyone. So like, if you see George Floyd and you might be thinking like, wow, that might just kind of apply to the black community, like police brutality. But like, that can happen to anyone. And you should kind of not, I mean, you should, like viewing the video, you should, like some sort of fear should come out of that, knowing that the police has the power to do that to anyone who they serve, I guess. And so there just needs to be a little bit of change.
Absolutely. And, you know, Timothy, I just want to add something to what you just said. And we are live streaming on Facebook. And I just want to tune in to see if there are any specific comments that we're getting from Facebook. Because we do get lots of participation and, and interaction from Facebook as well. So I'll keep tuning in Facebook. But here is what I wanted to say. You know, I got an email from somebody. And you know what? They, they, it's all about the narrative that you defined, right? And the narrative that was defined for me in that email was that, Rishi, why, why are you looking at, at police officers? Or rather, black people dying at the hands of police officers? There are many more, there are many, many more black people who die at the hands of other black people. And, and, you know, I, I think I have a sense of maturity with respect to how I operate in this world. And, hold on just one second, somebody. Okay. So, so, you know, when you look at, so Timothy, if I may ask, are you a person of, of a black origin or?
No.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm Filipino.
Yes, that's what I thought. But you, you have, you have a sense of, as if you are sort of, you, you completely feel it, right? And, you know, I'm a person of color too. And there are things that we all experience that makes us feel very alive to, to how are, we, we are like allies with the black community, you know? I mean, not just we, you know, it's everybody, everybody, every race, every skin, every, every person of, you know, whatever their origin is, you know, we all feel that we are allies with the black community. But, but there is an attempt to change the narrative with respect to that. And, and how they, they changed it was, you know, why are we so concerned about this? You know, but, but the thing is, you know, when there are incidents of shooting or whatever happening, you know, different parts of the country, you know, yes, it's, it's not acceptable to, to, to sort of not deal with that and not make something happen. But this incident of racism, where, you know, a person has been, you know, has been pushed down on his neck with, with a knee, right? How many, how many of you saw the video? We all saw the video. And I think nobody deserves to die like that, no matter who they are. You know, I mean, if you, if, like, I'll, I'll tell you, like, when, when I see a spider in my home, a pretty dangerous looking spider, that Seema just, you know, she's, she's got a fear for spider. You know, do I have an instinct of taking and crushing that spider? You know what I do? Let me show you what I do. Because this happens to be right here. I take this, I take this, I put it down on the floor or wherever. And then I take a piece of cardboard and I put it under this. And then I take the spider out and I leave it outside, right? So this is how we treat a spider. You know, why would a human ever? I mean, nobody deserves, not, nobody, nothing deserves that treatment. So, so this is, this is, you know, we cannot change the narrative. You know, don't allow people to change their narrative. Do not allow that. Focus upon this problem, please, please. Because if we focus upon this, we will find solutions. If we change the narrative, boom, the game is over. You know, we will never, ever fix the problem because, and, and more so if you start believing the narrative that others want to define for you, you're in big trouble. And I'll give you an example, like with the campaigns we run, you know, all the campaigns we run, we define the narrative of what it's going to be like. You know, what do we want to talk to people? Because what is core to the challenges that we have? Or what is the core campaign issue? We define the narrative. The moment I embrace the narrative of my opponent, the game is over. The game is completely over because now you, your position is going to be compromised. And that's exactly what, uh, what we're talking about. So let's keep going down the list and, uh, let's go to Ronit. Ronit.
Hi, so sorry, I couldn't turn on. I'm in the
You're chatting. Please turn on your videos because I would love to see all of you. We are never going to meet in person. So if you, you know, all of you, you know, please turn on your videos and let's have a good interactive conversation.
Yeah, I'm actually using a desktop right now because I'm in the middle of switching computers, so it doesn't have a camera on it.
No problem. Go ahead.
So, uh, the main thing that I was going to address was the fact that throughout these past, this past week especially, uh, this whole situation has gotten a lot of coverage within social media uh, all across the news and pretty much in the entire country. And everybody's aware of what happened and what's going on. And this definitely led to protests, a lot of which were peaceful and many could appreciate those peaceful ones. But then it also led to looting, which was frowned upon by many and kind of diverted the message of what really was supposed to happen. Uh, the main thing that I think is, um, is that, yes, black lives definitely do matter. But we need to take more policy related, uh, action in media coverage instead of retweeting, uh, black screens or retweeting hashtags. And we need to come up with something specific that we can target so that we can all push for that. Instead of, everybody by now, I think should understand, uh, the movement's cause and, uh, the clear problem that there is in the system. But the problem is right now that I don't think people know exactly what law that they can make in order to get rid of this problem at its core roots. Because it starts from a mindset and you can't govern a mindset necessarily. But I've heard a lot of things like getting, um, diversity education from an early age, like you mentioned earlier, about kindness, uh, all the way in back in kindergarten. And I had an idea of my own, which was to, uh, mandate wearing police body cameras for all police officers. So that those could be, uh, taken in by courts and reviewed for any police brutality if the situation calls for it. I know we were debating this in speech and debate, uh, for, uh, a tournament earlier on in the school year, when none of this had even happened. But the problem was still apparent as it still is now. It's even bigger right now because, uh, such a horrific act happened just a couple of weeks ago. But I definitely think that, uh, the police need to be held accountable and nobody is above the law. And we need to start reposting, uh, I've seen people start to repost change.org petitions. I've seen people start to repost specific laws that they want changed. And I think that's the exact approach that we should be taking, specifically targeting laws that should be implemented and specifically targeting laws that should be changed, just like what was done in similar past movements, such as the civil rights movement. They pushed to get rid of Jim Crow laws. And, uh, once you start targeting exactly what you want, it's a bit easier to make change than instead of if you're just trying to change the mindset.
And Ronit, uh, you know, I think, uh, great minds think alike. And you know, I'll tell you some of the things Ronit shared is exactly what I believe in. And I'm very honored to, to, to align with Ronit on this. And I'll make a couple of quick points on this one, you know, so I'm making some notes also. So, so when you look at, uh, let's talk about, so diversity of education checkmark, right? We all agree with that. So it's, it's a good point. Now I'll talk about what Dallas Police, uh, the Dallas Police Department, you know, what they did was, let's see if I can bring it up. Okay. Dallas Police Chief Rene Hall implemented a new order late Thursday night. So it happened, uh, just two days ago, compelling officers to either stop or attempt to stop another employee and force has been inappropriately applied or is no longer required. That's brilliant, right? Why should you, why should it stand by and watch? Because you know what? Uh, you know, our police are army are very rules driven. Because, uh, you know, you know, what happens is if you out there and you're pulled over by a cop and if you even touch the officer in a threatening manner, you know, you're likely to go to jail for that, right? So these are laws that we have. So, and, and these laws are there for the right reason. And that's probably the reason why, you know, another, another police officer who's watching it is, uh, and I, I, I actually, I truly don't know, you know, but, but there, there is a sense of restraint in terms of, you know, what's a colleague of theirs would, would engage in when, when a police officer is actually conducting a very specific set of actions. So that's the reason why I think I, I really like this Dallas policy. Now, one more is, let's talk about funding of education. And these are some ideas I'm going to throw out so that all of you are also thinking, right? So funding of our, uh, police departments. Now, what, now I think Roni talked about body cams and things like that. Yes, these are really good. And many of the departments all across the country have done that. And in fact, in, in our city of Saratoga, you know, we have Santa Clara County Sheriff Department because we are a minimal service city. And so the sheriff, uh, this must be like a couple of years back. They ran through a pilot program. They came to our meetings. They showed us what they will do and things like that. So now, any of our sheriff units that are deployed here, they all carry body cam. So this is how, what we need to make happen perhaps with the police units all across America, right? So body cams are very good. And then we talk about the funding of the police department, right? So, you know, I, I looked at a stance and apparently, you know, on the average, our police officers, uh, our sheriff units, they spend about fifty eight hours of shooting training in compared to eight hours of de-escalation. Like when there is a situation, like many years back in Silicon Valley, and, uh, you might be able to Google it. There was a Vietnamese mother, you know, she was in the kitchen and there was some, uh, she was, the police was called into the neighborhood. And, uh, she was standing there with a potato peeler. I don't know if you know what a potato peeler is. You know, it's, uh, probably used a lot more in the Asian community home. And I know exactly what that is. So the police officer barged in and, uh, you know, I, I forget the details now, but she, all she had was a potato peeler in her, in her hand. And she was shot because of that. Because they, they looked at her and they felt that there could be a threat. And they basically shot her, which caused a furor in our community, right? People were very, very unhappy about that. So, so these are things that we need to do and I'm making notes. Let's keep going. Let's go to Harshini.
Yeah, so I feel like part of the, like, the whole movement is acknowledging that as Asians, we do have some privilege. And I think that we have to acknowledge that whether we're South Asian, East Asian, Southeast Asian, doesn't matter. We do have, I know that I don't fear for my life when a cop, when a cop like pulls over my parents, but I know that my black brothers and sisters might, because it's, it's an unfair disadvantage that they're being put at. And I feel like this is also partly because the, the training for police officers is not as in-depth as it should be. I feel like we're training police officers to just believe that they have immense power and we see that, like, people are getting arrested for just cursing at an officer, which does not make sense. And you're supposed, I feel like officers need, are starting to believe that they're above the law. And I feel like we need to combat this in some way, whether that means increasing de-escalation training, increasing off, I feel like officers should also be aware of the laws. And they should have some study, like in-depth study of what laws are. So they know when they themselves are in violation of the law and aren't blatantly violating the law and attempting to get away with it. I believe that the body cam footage idea is actually a great idea because as we know, there are officers who are turning off their body cam and doing really horrendous things. So I believe that the body cam footage idea is a really powerful idea. But I also think that diverting funding from the, like the police department and putting it into like mental health, more into medical and basically crimes don't happen for no reason. Crimes happen because there's an underlying issue. And if we're, we're using force to address the crime, then we're not addressing the underlying issue. The crimes are only a symptom of the issue. So I think that we should be putting more funding into addressing like things like our homeless issue, things like mental health, rather than putting money into the police department and trying to address the, like, the surface level problems.
Yeah.
Another thing is like riots are also just a symptom of the issue. And looting is just people taking advantage of those symptoms. So the, the issue itself at hand is this whole movement and the fact that police have an unfair amount of power and they're not using their power in the right ways. And these riots are only a symptom of that issue. And by focusing on rioting, looting and things like that, we're completely disregarding and like downplaying a major problem.
You're right. Absolutely. Very well stated, Harshini. This is very impressive. You know, you articulated very well and looks like you're a deep thinker. That was very nicely done. And what I wrote down with you was root cause. You know, we have to analyze the root cause. This is a term we use in the tech industry very often. When you have a problem, we don't say, just look at the symptoms, you know, go back to the root and figure out, you know, why it is happening. You know, when you have a product defect, you know, it's not about just, uh, patching this up. But you have to go out and address every single issue that led to that problem defect, right? In terms of making sure that this problem defect doesn't happen again in the product development cycle, right? So, so that's what we call root cause. So we have to analyze the root cause. And, uh, you know, when you hear Dr. King talk about, he says, writing is the voice of the unheard. That's what it is. And, uh, the voices, uh, perhaps, uh, have been heard, perhaps suppressed, perhaps not heard. We don't know what it is, but there is a problem. We know that for sure. And we have to take some action. You know, you talk about the disparity, you know, you look at the presidential candidates, uh, they talk about the, the gap between the haves and the have-nots. And that is also leading to the situation we have. Now, Harshini, you said that, yes, we as Asians are, are fairly prosperous and we may not be targeted. But you know, Harshini, I'm sorry to say you are wrong. Because I got an email and I was actually trying to find that email. And this was, uh, an Indian American, uh, you know, uh, somebody who was driving in a neighborhood, a fairly affluent neighborhood and his skin was fairly dark. And he was pulled over. He was pulled over and as it turns out, I, I don't know the specifics of what happened. He was put into jail. You know, he was put into jail overnight and next day morning he was released and they lodged a complaint. They lodged a complaint, but nothing came out of it. I don't even know if it happened here or somewhere else. And I'll have to look that up again to, to see that, uh, just remind me what that story was, but that story came to my email. So none of us, none of us are, are beyond that. You know, it could happen to anybody and everybody. So, you know, the thing is, you know, no one can escape racism. That includes, that includes white people. That includes white people too, you know, I mean, none, it's if we think that we have immunity, that's probably not true. And sooner or later, we'll find out. So Harshini, I really, really liked your insight. Thank you so much for sharing. Let's go to Vin. Uh, let's see, Vin, would you like to say the question or should I read the question? It was sent to me privately.
Yeah, sure. I can say it.
Go ahead.
All right. So I was just asking like here, especially in the Silicon Valley, how, how, what do you think you can tell like the youth, especially like influencing politicians on what changes need to be made? Not only like regarding the, uh, regarding like police officers and what they can do like. I think there's the immunity act, like I was reading somewhere, um, how you can talk to your congressman or senators about how, uh, they can get that appealed, but then also like other issues in our community.
That's a great question, Vin. So let me just share something for you. And how many of you have gone to the Black Lives Matter page that have on a website? Has anybody gone there? Okay, let me just share that and I'll show you. Where is it? I believe here it is. So this is, uh, rishikumar.com/blacklivesmatter. And let me just put it in the chat window for you guys. So you have it. Where is my chat window? There we go. So you can click on that and you can read it. And if you scroll down, you scroll down, scroll down, scroll down, scroll down, you'll find anti-racism resources. So there are organizations, uh, just go and review this. There are lots of reading material, videos to watch. I mean, that President Obama discussion that you were playing, uh, before we got started, that itself has a lot of great information in there, you know. And podcasts to subscribe to, books to read, organizations to follow. Hmm, what is that? It's very important for us to see which organization that, that you can affiliate yourself with. And, and then, okay. Oh, right here. Look at this. Look at this. I have it right here. So. Really hit home. A friend's younger brother who's of Indian descent, but with a darker skin tone, went to Lynbrook High School. He recently talked about his expression where he was racially profiled and pulled over in his own neighborhood, driving home, has been aggressively arrested because he was in the wrong neighborhood. What happens when that is our child or our grandchildren? There's no justice for him. And he filed a complaint regarding his threat. Because the police department found no wrongdoing and he was released in the morning anyway. So just remember this, everybody. Just remember this. I don't think so we can, uh, we are immune to that. So, so what I would like to say is, you know, look at these organizations. So to answer Vin's question, which was an amazing question, to look at different organizations, you can, you can follow that you can join. So the thing is, you know, when you look at, uh, so we banned vaping devices in our city of Saratoga. So I proposed this at the Best Valley College, you know, we had a city council meeting at the Best Valley College. And Michigan had just banned vaping. Uh, I forget which month it was, you know, probably last year around this time maybe. And I, I proposed right away that, uh, look, guys, we need to ban vaping products in, in our city. Because there are, it can be a fatality that can avoid. And, um, my city council members were not very keen. And it's, you know, I mean, we have different ideologies, different aspirations, different perspectives, and I respect that. So I, I basically brought it up, but you need, in the city council, we are five of us. We need a majority of three to get anything done. So it, it didn't move forward. But then we started hearing from the youth of a community. And we had, you know, Saratoga from a smoking, you know, you, you are graded by the county in terms of where you align with, uh, with respect to smoking. There are nonprofit groups that grade you. So Saratoga was a D at one point. And then we rolled out a very specific set of ordinances. And, uh, you know, when you have a third party that grades you, they're like, oh my God, we look bad compared to other cities, right? So we started bolstering our ordinances and then boom, we became a B. And then you know what we did? We basically, uh, banned, uh, what do you call it? Chewing tobacco or something? Flavor tobacco, flavor tobacco. So, you know, the youth are being enticed with flavored tobacco so that the tobacco industry can have, you know, just like we talk about young kids being taught something. They are taught by giving them, because tobacco, you know, I've never tasted tobacco in my life. I've never tasted tobacco. In fact, I don't even drink alcohol, you know, I thrive on the life energy, like people go to a party. And, uh, people are, are having a good time. People are drinking, you know, I'm having a good time too. And friends of mine, after watching me in action for like six, seven, eight years or 10 years, you know, one fine day they realize, oh, Rishi, you don't drink. Like I thought you were always drunk in a party. You know, because, you know, and then they would say, Rishi is drunk on life. He's, he's happy. And that's how you operate, right? You, I don't need to rely upon alcohol to have a good time, right? So when you look at tobacco, you know, these are like sort of, uh, bad things, uh, in life. You know, I mean, they cause trouble. I mean, they cause problems in the lungs, right? If you smoke, it causes lung problems. And so we are trying to purge it, right? So how do you do that? When the youth of a community started reaching out, started talking to us, started emailing us. That was, that is very powerful. Extremely powerful to have a fifteen-year-old email us. You know, Mountain Vineyard Annexation Project, uh, I don't know how many of you knew that. You can Google that up, you know, look at Saratoga Mountain Vineyard Annexation. And there's, there's a, the Merck has written an article on that. And I was the Lone Ranger and I was fighting against my four council members, against that project. Because I felt that project was wrong. Why? Because they wanted to build, part of the project was to build a three hundred room hotel on top of, uh, on top of the Saratoga Mountains. And that would disrupt the wildlife and disrupt, it would create landslides perhaps. And it could in fact disrupt habitat, you know, the natural vegetation we had there, you know. And, and do we really want to build something like this in a high-risk fire zone? And, and do we really want to build something like this in a high-risk fire zone? All the environmental groups were with me on that. They were like, no, Sierra Club, you know, look at Greenwood Hills, you know, there were so many organization, organizations that, that aligned with me on that. And then I see at the city council, uh, she was a high school student who showed up and now is telling us what we need to do. Is what, telling us what we need to do. Which is like, wow, now how can we go astray in terms of what is right and what is wrong, where a high school student needs to come back, come out and tell us? That was a very, very powerful moment in that meeting and I drew attention to her. I drew attention to her and said, look, guys, listen to what she said. Because if the youth are coming out and telling us to do something, we better listen to it very closely because this world is theirs. This future is theirs and we've got to listen to them and we've got to respond to them. So similarly with all of you, I ask you, I ask you to engage, pick an organization, pick an organization that you align with, that you like, that, that represents your ideology, but don't do it right away. Spend some time reading about it, find out who they are. Once you have decided upon that one organization, spend some time with them. And, you know, I always say, when you want to make change happen, you have to operate from the inside versus the outside. It's a lot easier to make change happen. I'll give you the example. I found things in the city that were not right. I joined the planning commission. I became a planning commissioner so that I could express. I became part of the city council so that I could make change happen. It's a lot easier to do it from the inside. So when you join an organization, now you can influence some of the policies of that organization and you can leverage that larger team that you have to go out and have these types of conversations. So you look at the, the police, uh, policy recommendations that are coming at us, we get the same set of emails from many youth, many youth, and I don't even know where they live because they don't have the address. They're perhaps coming from all parts of the country. They're all, this is an organization that is taking time to make change happen by sending one email by one person at a time. So to answer your question, Vin, I'm sorry, it's been long-winded. But, you know, for you to make change happen, join a group, even if you don't join a group, you know, figure out, you know, all these elected leaders, you know, look at city council members around you, you can easily find all the emails for all the city council members. You know, create a Google Doc, create a Google Doc with all the emails of city council members. And as you see things happening, you communicate with all of them. That, hey, I see this is a big problem in America. What are you going to do? Fix it? Here are three things you can do in your community and I guarantee you this, people will listen to you. So this is the best way. Express your voice. You know, sometimes we feel that, oh my God, who will listen to me? You know, I'm a nobody, right? Who will listen to me? But your voice is very powerful. Because at the end of the day, you know, these elected leaders, many of them, they are, you know, some of our elected leaders are also career politicians. They're afraid of being yanked out of office because they don't, they may not have any other choice they can make in their life in terms of a livelihood. They're afraid. They're likely going to respond to you and especially if a large group comes at them, you know, that's when they will swoop. Even if, even if, you know, there is, in the world of politics, I see a lot of activity for the sake of activity. Activity for the sake of activity. And my, my objective in public service is to deliver results, pick on some tough problems, deliver results. You know, why would somebody like me from the world of tech jump into, into public service? Because I really want to impact the challenges, but not every politician operates like that. But when you highlight to them the urgency of something and they realize that, oh my God, if I don't act on this, I may be without a job, they are likely to act. They are likely to act. You have to think about who your target audience is. And then your voice can become much more powerful because now you're speaking to them in the language. And, and sometimes we actually get emails, emails like this in, in the city of Saratoga, that if you don't do this, then at the, at the ballot, I'll make sure that I do not support people like you. It's a very, very strong statement. It's a very strong statement. But I think elected leaders need to be reminded that they report to the people and not vice versa. Because there are elected leaders who believe they are in a world of glamour, that they are in a Hollywood movie, that, oh my God, people respect us, people worship us. It's not like that. And you know, they gets, they get, they get the, the, the noise in their own head takes over. And they believe that, oh my God, I'm bigger than life, just like Tom Cruise is. Right? They start believing in that, but no, they have to be reminded that, look, guys, you report to the people and not vice versa. Let's go to someone else now. Okay, um. Wow, there are quite a few questions. So we had Timothy, we had Ambika, we have Kaden. Oh, let's go to Kaden.
Um, so like, I'd just like to go to like the root cause of like what I think it is. So I think there's like definitely a societal stigma, like just like looking at Silicon Valley where like I live, like the Silicon Valley is seen as like the economic center of California. So like the black population is significantly lower. And like that in and of itself just shows like the disparity in our country and the inability to provide like equal opportunity to everyone to succeed. And so that side, I think our first step is welfare reform. Because like it, welfare programs are like supposed to help people out of poverty and they're supposed to help these oppressed groups. But like, it's historically been proven to be racially prejudiced and to, um, reject like oppressed groups. So I just think our first step is to, um, help these minority groups succeed in our society because as of right now, they are seen as like dysfunctional members of our society and like that shouldn't be the case. I just think that's one of the reasons why, like in your story that you shared, where the cops told like that kid that he didn't belong in that community, like, like I'm assuming it's like in affluent community or whatever. I think like that shows that people, um, expect like for other affluent people to be in that community and they don't expect like people of color to exist there as well. So I think the first step should be welfare reform.
I totally, totally agree with that. I absolutely agree with that, Kaden. And, uh, let's talk a little bit about what, uh, Kaden addressed. And now we'll start, uh, moving a little faster, you know, because I want to make sure that everybody gets to chime in. So after Kaden, we'll go to Avantika. And, but let me just chime in about Kaden. So Kaden pointed out the fact that we don't have too many black, uh, members who live, black neighbors who live in our community. And, uh, and, and, and he talks about welfare reform and they are tied together like how Kaden mentioned. You know, we were doing the podcast the other day and, uh, we reached out to a lot of my, my black friends. I reached out to city council members, we reached out to any CP organization, we reached out to many of them. And, you know, if you look at, uh, let's say you look at Delaware or you look at South Carolina, it's, we have a much larger black population and it's a little easier to get black panelists. And unfortunately, we didn't get it in time because we planned it like two days, uh, we did it on Thursday and we actually planned this on Tuesday. Because I felt that it's, 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 it's a burning issue and we have to get these conversations started. So we had a sense of urgency and we always believe that when you do something, you know, you may not be hundred percent ready, but even if you are 70 or 80% ready, let's go out and do it. And it's better to do something badly initially, instead of trying to do it perfectly. Because the perfectionism, it's not something that, uh, will happen today. You know, it takes time to do it perfectly. And if you look at, uh, so, so anyway, we, we decided we wanted to, uh, move forward without a black panelist. And then we saw so much hue and cry over Instagram that, oh my God, why did these guys have two sheriff officers? And they had, they didn't have a black panelist. What they didn't realize was, and I'm a person of color, I'm a minority, we had John Hirokawa. He's of Japanese origin, so he, he's a former under sheriff, sheriff of the county. You know, he was also a minority, you know, he's a Japanese-American. And then we had, uh, Jade, a council member from Claremont, and Jade was also a Filipino. So I mean, what's wrong with this? You know, I mean, we had three minority members of a community. We were chatting with Jim Davis from Sunnyvale, who's obviously Caucasian, and we had a good conversation. It wasn't like we were, uh, saying something bad. I mean, it was a good conversation. So, so that's a challenge that we have. And in fact, uh, later this evening, at, uh, it's, what time is it? It's at 4:00 PM, later this afternoon. At 4:00 PM, we have leaders from the black community, black student organizations. There are at least three of them, perhaps more that are joining this. So I invite you, all of you to be back at 4:00 PM and let's continue this conversation. But let's, uh, I, I want to address all the questions that come up here. Let's go to Avantika.
Hi, okay. So, um, I feel like that there's been a lot going around, especially about all, all lives matter versus black lives matter. And all lives matter is like saying that all lives matter and black lives matter only like is specifically only like for black lives matter. And they're saying that all lives matter actually like kind of like steers the focus like away from black lives matter, which is like kind of the origin of the problem for George Floyd's case. So, um, I just want to hear like what your guys' like thoughts are on that. Like, do you think like it should be all lives matter? Because we know also that like us as like Indians or Filipinos or like whatever our like race or ethnicity is, like we also like face some racism like day to day. So what are your guys' like thoughts on that?
Yeah, great question. So, so what I feel is, you know, again, I think, you know, it's about the narrative that we're going to define with this. And, uh, black people dying at the hands of police. You know, that's a problem we need to fix and we need to stay focused on this problem until we can address it. The racism that black people experience is, is, uh, it's quite, quite high. You know, I think, uh, if you look at Silicon Valley, I mean, there's a lot of diversity here. And, uh, so, excuse me. So when you look at, uh, a professor from, uh, from San Jose State University, you know, he was, uh, driving, uh, his foreign car, which was probably a Benz. And this was, uh, maybe a couple of years back. And, uh, somebody, uh, like at Home Depot or somewhere and somebody started yelling at him. So he, he was pointing him and, and he's like, he rolled down his window. And what he was told was like, you are driving a foreign car, you foreigner, you deserve to go back to your country you came from. And he was taken aback because he's, he's a PhD, he's a professor who teaches, I think it is like math or physics at San Jose State University. You know, and he was like taken aback, living here for like 30 years. This is the very first time he experienced racism, right? So, but that's the nature of it. But you know, does it, it might affect us for a day or two, but we get through it. But what about losing a life? What about a child losing their father forever? What about a person who's sleeping in bed and who's shot down by, by police officers? You know, so, so Avantika, I think we need to stay focused on the problem. Like we say, you know, we have to really engage all resources and, and, and push hard to make some change happen. And this is the time for us to do it. So, so let's go to Jonathan, Jonathan Wong. Yeah. Jonathan talks about institutional racism. Are we going to be planning to address that? Especially regarding police brutality, the plight of LGBTQ plus the people of color and the longstanding consequences of redlining, gentrification of the black community. Yes, that is the exact problem we need to solve. Let's go to Ally Bell and Colin.
So my question was, um, what do you think about shifting some funds away from police to mental health services? So people can call mental health professionals rather than the police in appropriate circumstances?
Yep. Colin, you want to add something to it?
Um, yeah, that was basically my question too. Not, not much else to add there.
Good. It's a great question. And in fact, that's exactly what we need to do, you know. When you look at de-escalation, uh, when it comes to funding and, uh, when you compare like how 58 hours of, uh, shooting versus eight hours of de-escalation, I think, uh, you know, our police officers are stressed out, right? So you know, you know, there are very simple ways to approach our problems, right? So the police officers, you know, they are constantly at a little bit of an edge because they are putting themselves in harm's way. Let's, let's, let's take this, right? These guys are, are, they, they, they are, they are actually giving back to the community in terms of, you know, how they, they are, it's, it's a dangerous job to be a police officer, no matter where you are. You imagine, you know, Saratoga or the community we live in is pretty safe, but then the police officer has to be driving and now they have to pull over on the side of the freeway to rescue somebody. That itself is dangerous. Because, you know, anything can happen when you're at the shoulder of a freeway. So they are putting themselves in the harms way. So the stress level is a little bit higher because they deal with this on a daily basis. Let's give them some credit for, for, for being there for the community. You know, I mean, when there is a burglary that happens in Saratoga, they reach out within like two or three minutes. Within two to three minutes, they are there. And so they are driving a little faster than normal. That tends to elevate the stress as well. So the thing is, you know, when it comes to addressing challenges like a, like a mom with a potato peeler who is at her home, you know, when a police officer shows up, they have a different perspective of, of that situation, you know, because that stress level is a little high. And when your stress is high, you're likely to do something that perhaps you would not normally. And that's why what Ally and Colin say makes a lot of sense, completely makes a lot of sense, to shift funds away from police to mental health services. Now, some of these challenges that happen is because of mental situations. So we not only need to address that by engaging the right type of social organizations, but also for de-escalation, we need to align with nonprofit groups. Because they have, they are a lot more calmer in terms of how they are going to interact with people because they, they don't have that stress level that police officers are dealing with. All this makes perfect sense to me. Great, great, uh, great perspective, Ally and Colin. Okay, and, uh, let's go to, uh, I did want to mention, so many of you have some great insights. And I really like the ideas I'm hearing and I would love to invite you to join our team here. You know, many of the folks here on this call, they are part of our internship program. And if you want to be, if you want to take a look at what we do with the summer, go to rishikumar.com/fellowship. Let's go to Jay Trippinani.
Yeah, I actually kind of have, um, a few points I want to make and, uh, even a question for you too. One thing that we talked about earlier was, was body cams. And, um, from what we've seen in the past six years or so since Ferguson, Missouri, when Maka Brown was, was shot and killed at the hands of a police officer, that the implementation of body cams has been pretty widespread, but has not yielded many results, um, as a result of this, as a result of its implementation. Um, I even did a story one time where I went out to my local police department, the Road City Police Department. And I interviewed the, the chief police about the implementation of body cameras, whether it's useful, whether it's possible, given the funding and some other issues like that. And what we found was that many local police departments, um, even, you know, the size of my city, we have close to 8,000 people. We have, the same to our county itself diverts a lot of funds towards law enforcement. Even then, my local police department can't afford, um, uh, body cams. And along with that, prosecutors generally use that information, the footage that is used from body cams to their advantage. And that is indicative of, of larger issues within police, uh, like qualified immunity, which is adoption that allows police officers to, um, be immune to certain allegations towards them, especially when it comes to police brutality, along with police unions who pretty much, who, who doggishly, uh, prevent, uh, any, any indictment of, of police, police officers. And I think that's what we need to address first if we want to work towards police reform, um, before anything else.
Yep.
Um, yeah, and also, one thing I also want to talk about is, uh, how the tech industry is, is even somewhat, um, exacerbating this, this issue, you know, in, in my community. Uh, Facebook is pretty close by and they actually donated a pretty large sum of money to them, to the Menlo Park Police Department. And from what I've been hearing from the community leaders around me, um, from the protests that I've been to that have been, uh, who have had speakers who live in those communities, they've been facing a lot of issues a- as a result of, of that funding. And what we don't like seeing is Facebook, Amazon, all these other big corporations that don't have our best interests at mind. Uh, you know, posting black scores or posting solidarity on social media while at the same time funding police departments and exacerbating these issues. And that's definitely something that we need to address and something that the technician needs to take to, to, that they need to be accountable for as well. Um, with a lot of this police brutality. And I just want, I just want to, I have another question after this and, uh, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, I mean, we, we have to look at Yeah, so I, I think, you know, I mean, we, we have to look at, uh, you know, when Facebook is funding the police department, you know, how's that money been put to use? I think that is more important than anything else. You know, I mean, it doesn't mean that we pull the funding away from the police, I mean, they are serving the needs of a community. I mean, our burglaries in Saratoga went down by forty-seven percent uh, year to year from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, and a huge hand was the diligence of our, of our sheriff units, you know, I mean, they did a great job. So the funding, do we need to pull funding? Probably not, but we need to analyze in terms of how these funding dollars are input to use. And, uh, then when you look at, uh, the models of funding, right? So, so here is the thing, right, with, uh, with coronavirus, you know, uh, we will be spending like billions of dollars on online education. Every school will roll out infrastructure for online education, because it's a new word. So similarly, with the stuff that we are seeing, it's time that the federal government jumped in with policies. And, uh, and also funding model for that. For example, the policy would be that every police unit across the United States anywhere would have body camps. Uh, for which there are certain disadvantaged communities that may not have the source of funding. So now they need the federal dollars to make that happen. So, so I think having things like this in place, you know, policy ordinances and the funding behind it at the federal level would definitely be very helpful. So Jay, hopefully I addressed both components of your question.
Yeah, I, I have one more question for you. Yeah, so, looking at the Indian community and, um, how my family, how my friends' families and how their parents' families look at B L M and other issues that especially, uh, impact black people. I've been seeing a lot of underlying racist sentiments, um, within our, within our community against, um, other people of color. How do you think as Indian people, how do you think we can collectively address this issue and be in support of it?
Yeah, that, that is for Indian Americans, you know, how do we, how do we deal with that? And, uh, it's really hard for me to answer. And, uh, you know, I think, I think what likely happens is, you know, we sort of feel that we are sheltered. We are sheltered and we are immune to all this, and it's for the other people to experience the racism or, or been shut down, locked down into a jail overnight. And we don't believe that it's going to happen in our lives, but, uh, you know, it takes, uh, that's the reason why we call this, uh, this podcast series, A Reality Check. Because it takes something, something to happen, a small trigger here and boom, oh, my God. This is the reality that, that al- always existed. But I, that I did not embrace, that I did not reconcile to, that I perhaps did not know. And it takes very little for that to happen. So, you know, I think the wa- the way to communicate this is if we, if we meet friends of ours who believe that, no, you know, this is not a problem for me, you know, I'm, I'm like, um, I'm, uh, you know, this will never intersect in my life and we should remind them that we are all in this together. That, uh, some find, someday, you know, they will also feel that pressure uh, in their life and, and just remind them that keep an open mind to this. You know, we have to build a better world, we have to, we have to, uh, make sure that we are addressing the needs of, of society. And this is currently the needs of society. If we, if we don't address it and look, look away, I don't think so, we are building a better future for America if you're going to look away. Now, what do you really want to do? Do you, don't you want to address this? I mean, you look at the situation, what is going on with all the unrest in pretty much every city of the United States and perhaps many, many cities of the world too. The world is looking at America and saying that, oh, my God, what's wrong with these guys, right? We, we completely fell flat with coronavirus, we completely fell flat with this issue. So what is it telling us? We need to take action. So you have to remind them to read some resources, you know, point them, give them some reading material. Send them the anti-racism resources and it's a learning opportunity for them to get educated and to engage with these types of issues. So they, Jay, that, that's, it's, it's a tough problem to, to answer. But, uh, you know, all we can do is educate, we can, all we can do is educate and make sure that these people will stay engaged. Okay, uh, so a lot of people are leaving because we went over our time, uh, the sixty minutes. I'll leave you with one thing. So, this is a quote, "With malice towards none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for him who shall have borne the battle and for his widow and his orphan, to do all which we may achieve and cherish to jest and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations." That was Abraham Lincoln. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you so much for joining in, I really appreciate that. And so many, many of our fellows, we have a meeting at one P M, if you're going to be onboarded. If you've already gone through the onboarding process, you can join at one thirty P M. And then at four P M, we have another discussion, a final discussion with the black leaders in the Bay Area. And these are student leaders and they will be chair, sharing their perspectives. So please do chime in. Ambika has her hand up, let's, uh, hear it from Ambika.
Um, I was just wondering if the, uh, four P M meeting is on the same link? Or is there going to be another link sent to us?
This is the same exact link, yep.
Okay.
So the one P M meeting is on a different Zoom link, uh, you already have that, the four P M is on the same Zoom link. So invite all of you to join this, uh, four P M meeting as well. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, Renee.